Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority, meeting of June 12, 2018. The meeting recessed at 1:15 a.m. to be reconvened on Thursday, June 14, 2018, at 4 o'clock. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman, here. Councilmember Cardula, present.
Councilmember Castleberry, here.
Councilmember Hickman, here.
Councilmember Wilson, here.
Councilmember Clark, here.
Councilmember Holman, here.
Councilmember Allison, here.
Mayor Miller, here.
I need a motion to reconvene the meeting.
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. We have one item on the budget, which is the adoption of FYE 2019, City of Norman Proposed Operating and Capital Budgets, and the Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau Inc. Budget with Detailed Annual Plan of Work. And I will let everybody know, right now, we have to be out of this room at 5:45 because Planning Commission is tonight. So, I don't know why on earth we can't get through with this part in a lot less time than that. So, I need a motion to adopt or reject the FYE 2019, City of Norman.
I have a question.
Yes.
A clarification. This is one item that has the budgets, and it also has the Norman CVB budget with detailed annual plan of work. In the past, have those been two separate line items? Are we able to make a motion to make those two separate line items? Or how would we, at this point, I don't know procedurally, how would we do that, to make those two separate items?
It is two separate motions. Is that your question?
Yes, but on here, it's only one item, item 23.
Oh, you mean make them two separate items next time?
Can we vote on them separately?
You do vote on them separately.
We do, okay. So there's one item, but we're going to vote on separately?
Yes.
Okay. That was just the clarification. I want to make sure we're voting on them separately, even though it was one item.
Yeah, it's two motions, two seconds.
Okay, perfect.
Two public comments, two council comments, two everything. Yeah, when we vote on the budget, we'll also vote on their budget separately.
They're asking if we can do visitors first.
Oh, you wanted, but I didn't hear that.
I just, my clarification, what we're talking about.
Motion to CVB budget first, vote on it, then a budget.
Okay, you want to do another.
Yeah.
It's fine with me. I don't have a problem with it. So.
Make a motion to adopt the 2018-19 Norman budget.
Second.
Had a motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments? The motion on the floor is to adopt the Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau FYE 2019 budget and detailed annual plan of work. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast, and the FYE 2019 Visit Norman budget and detailed annual plan of work has been approved unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm sure that Mr. Shim is very happy about that. Do you have any comments that you want to make? Okay. Okay, we had, okay. I need a motion to adopt or reject the FYE 2019, City of Norman Operating and Capital Budgets.
Motion to adopt.
Do I have a second?
Second.
At this time, we have several amendments to the budget, and at this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember, the First Amendment.
I move seizures and restitution fund allocations be increased by $30,000 to fund requested mobile vehicle barriers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Comments from council members. Public comments. Final comments. The motion on the floor is to amend the budget as previously stated. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been, passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Holman.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Beerman to make the Second Amendment.
Okay. I move that projected allocations for Community Development Block Grand Fund be increased to $1,644, with an offsetting increase to projected CDBG and home program reimbursement revenues from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Comments from the council. Public. Final comments. Motion on the floor is to amend the budget as previously stated. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the amendment is approved unanimously.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Clark to make the Third Amendment.
I move that grammatical and typographical corrections to the budget documents with no financial impact be made as necessary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Comments from the council. Public. Final comments. Motion on the floor is to amend the budget as previously stated. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. Has everybody voted?
We have some.
Councilmember Cardula, are you going to vote?
Thank you. Our votes have now been cast, and the motion passes unanimously.
This time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Castleberry to make the Fourth Amendment.
I move that general fund allocation to the City Manager Department be increased by $80,725, or a half-year position, and capital fund allocations for capital outlay transfers to general fund be increased by $4,500 to implement the internal audit program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Comments from the council. Councilmember Hickman.
Good. For the benefit of the folks that are here, can we get a brief overview of what this internal audit program is? Is it two positions and the role of those folks, please?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Hickman. In previous council discussions, the proposal was to increase the general fund budget to implement an internal audit function. In staff discussions, it was proposed that would be two positions, one which would be an internal audit position, one which would be internal audit technician position to provide analytical and clerical support to that function. And that is the proposal that's before you tonight. Again, council does not implement the positions themselves, but allocates funds for those positions.
Sorry. So it is going to be two, it'll be two hires.
Yes, sir.
And one of those folks will be doing primarily the work regarding the sales tax savings that we've discussed, or no?
No, sir.
That's a different position. That's item, that's 33.
So this is two positions that are going to be for internal auditing?
Yes, sir. The assignments to that function would be at the discretion of the council and the manager.
Okay, I guess, I appreciate that clarification. My thought, and I thought some of the conversations had been that this would be a position we would hire once we changed the charter, so that this internal auditor, auditor positions, could report to council and work at our bequest, behest, as opposed, you know, through the city manager in the sense of to have that independence and that true internal auditor role.
That's one thing you might do. Now, at the previous council discussion, it was clarified that the position would be hired by the city manager, but those functions and those assignments to that function would be at the discretion of council. But yes, it would require a charter change for those positions to report directly to the council. But it was deemed that we would move forward with the hiring of those personnel, reporting to the council, but given assignments by the council, reporting to the manager, but given assignments by the council.
Well, I guess I would ask Councilmember Castleberry, or whomever, either A, we table this and reconsider it at mid-year, and we seek to change the charter, or we authorize these positions, but they not be hired until the charter is changed. To be truly independent, I think the person has to be hired, hirable and fireable by council, with all due respect to the city manager. But if the purpose is to have an internal auditor who reports to council and is working, in a sense, directly for council, I think that we need to be, council needs to be the ones doing the hiring and the firing, and that would require, I understand, a charter change. And so, I don't know if that's an ask for, since you made the motion to, if you would amend it, or if I'm misunderstanding what the, what the motion was.
I would like to make a comment. That was one of the reasons we talked about not hiring until January, was so that we could put those things in place. But what you're suggesting would require council discussion about what that would mean. I think everybody was agreed that this person would be supervised by the council. I think the other part of it needs to be discussed, but all that can be done, since this position won't be hired until January.
But if it's going to require a charter change, well, that won't be, I guess, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Thank you. What we talked about is, my understanding is that council can hire this person as a consultant, just like we would any other consultant, and so they would not technically be an employee until we had the charter changed.
That's another thing you could do.
And that's why we basically said, we're not going to do this for six months, until we, if we don't get the charter changed and we go ahead with this position, they will be a consultant, and not a W-2 employee, but somebody that we pay, so it's totally independent, that we would hire the consultants, and until we can transition them into a full-time employee with the benefits and that kind of stuff, from a compensation package.
That's another thing you could do.
That's what my intention is on this deal. That's why, instead of making it for a full year, we only did it for a half-year. And if we do it that way, it's in the council's, city council's budget. And so, we'll hire the consultant. So it won't happen until council makes an affirmative decision to hire that person, or the charter changes. So I think we've got some protections in there, because it is very important to have the internal audit function report directly to, quote, the board of directors, and not the, any officers in our organization, that's us. So that's kind of how this is structured.
The motion is just to provide funds, so yes, that's something you certainly could do.
I mean, do I need to, I guess, from, I guess, from a city manager standpoint, do I need to amend it for that? Or is it pretty clear that you're not going to hire somebody without us? Run it by us first?
So, just reword it, or amend it to say, put it in the council budget?
The motion that you've read, said city managers, Councilmember.
Yes, so I'd amend that motion, or to read as follows. I move the general fund allocation to the city council department be increased by $80,725, and capital fund allocation for capital outlay transfer to general fund be increased by $4,500 to implement internal audit program.
Second.
And I think the understanding, I think it's, hopefully, it's pretty clear what we're trying to do here in the manager, yeah, okay, so.
Councilmember Wilson.
What does that charter language kind of look like? I mean, I guess, where does that go? I don't know what my exact question is, but it seems like we're charting new waters here. There's.
Yeah, that's probably something we'd want to sit down and bring forward to council. You might want to do it as a study session. Again, as Mr. Francisco mentioned, all you're doing here is you're appropriating money. Clearly, you hit the nail on the head. The council, under the charter, is not allowed to hire any other employees than the city manager. If it's your intent for the council to hire somebody as an employee, then it will require a charter change. I'll have to look at those sections and make a recommendation to you about how that language would change. But the idea would be to let you hire somebody other than the city manager.
Right, I understand that, and I understand that we are just allocating funds at this moment. But I'm curious, that, are there other situations? And this is an education to me, maybe education to other people. Are there other situations where we, as council, and hire consultants that are from a council budget? Is that, is that where the, is that where that comes from generally? Okay, sorry. I should have asked that before today.
It would be a contract that the council would approve, and then that contractor then would report, could report directly to the council. Certainly, under the charter, the city manager is still the administrator of the city, so he'll actually administer the contract. But the contract itself could require some direct reporting to the council.
Thank you for that clarification.
I might just add to that, and it's a good response from Mr. Bryant, but maybe a similar example would be, in the city council's budget, there's dollars set aside to hire the city's external financial auditor.
Okay. This is a common practice, then, kind of?
Yeah, kind of.
A new common practice?
Yeah. It's not traditional, but it's not uncommon or illegal.
Okay.
We're mixing some concepts, but I think we can get there.
Well, it felt a little bit illegal, or getting the cart before the horse, without the charter change, but just make clarification.
Definitely more steps will need to be taken. The step right now is just appropriating the money.
Gotcha.
Councilmember Allison.
Sure. Kind of my, this, my comment's going to go with pretty much all of these positions. The, with the exception of maybe one, when I get some clarification. But I still really feel uncomfortable with hiring additional people with the forecasted negative balance on the budget. I know we've talked about trying to make some of these justifiable as far as, how can they save money to make themselves justified? Whereas I think this position may have that, but we won't know that it's justified, that it's saving actual dollars, until we hit that mid-year time, which I won't be here to make that decision at the mid-year time if we decide to move on with that. So at this time, I'm not going to support this, this position, as that, I do not know that I can, that these positions will be paid, be able to be paid for with our currently negative balance budget, so.
Comments from the public. Final comments from the council. Councilmember Castleberry.
I would say, I do share Councilperson Allison's concerns, but I would just like to remind people that this is, when we do the budget, we're appropriating funds. We're saying that we're approving the expenditure, we're not actually doing it. And so, because of the way this is structured, we would have to have the contract. So if this came in six months from now, and the contract came forward and said, hey, we're going to hire this person, we could look at the budget at that time and say, no, we can't afford it, we put it off for a little bit longer. So I think we still have the flexibility, from a cash flow standpoint, is when this person comes on. This is really authorizing that position and showing our intent that we want to have some internal auditing, that we want to have some more fiscal management, and that council wants to have, take a little bit more control of the finances. It's not as clean as I would like it to be, but tonight's night, we have to approve the budget for the entire year.
Councilmember Wilson.
I would like to say that I support this position, because I think it has the opportunity to pay for itself while we are having these, this sort of decline or negative budget situation. It's kind of a sketchy move, in my opinion, but I'm going to support it, because I think it pays for itself.
I agree with Councilmember Allison. I was concerned about, although I am a strong supporter of every one of these, I was particularly concerned about this, because it would require two people to do, to actually fulfill what the job description would be for this. And I'm very worried, it's a lot of money. The only reason that I'm supporting it is because I felt like we were being much more prudent by bringing these positions on at half-year, so that we will have a chance to look at the budget and see, see how it's going. Because I'm not sure that I would feel comfortable if we weren't doing it that way, if we were starting these positions out right now. So, I'm going to support it, but I am, I am concerned about the budget. We've had some good news for a couple of months, and I hope that that's what the trend is going to be. Any other comments? And we didn't have any public comments. All right. The motion on the floor is to amend the budget as previously stated. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Allison.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Holman to make the Fifth Amendment.
I move that general fund allocations to the Public Works Department be increased by $75,491, and capital fund allocations for capital outlay transfers to the general fund be increased by $22,250 for expansion of services related to the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Just for clarification, I'd like to ask Councilman Holman, the $75,491, that was for the full year. I believe we talked about only making it, did you, would you be attainable, amenable, sorry, to making that $37,746, which would be six months, half-position, that gives us time to actually go through the ADA plan and get that coordinator placed there, is.
$1,746?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I would.
I'll second his amendment, to his amendment.
Other comments from council members? Comments from the public? No comments? Okay, all right. Final comments from the council. I am strongly in support of this position. I think it's particularly critical because of the ADA evaluation plan that was just completed, and our hopes that what's going to happen is we're going to form a committee. We haven't voted on it yet, but that's kind of what we're looking forward to. And I think that, that Mr. O'Leary, like, like everyone else over here in the staff section knows, we need a person to do that job, to really do what we need to have happen. So, I'm really thankful to everybody that we put this on as an amendment.
Councilmember Hickman, I just need to clarify for the record. You originally seconded Councilmember Holman's motion, and since he amended that motion, I want to get your concurrence.
Yes, I concur.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The motion on the floor to amend the budget as previously stated. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Passed, and the motion passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Allison.
We're always happy when we make somebody else happy. Item 30, I'm sorry. I recognize Councilmember Castleberry to make the Sixth Amendment.
I move that the general fund allocation to the finance department be increased by $70,710 for support of the Norman Municipal Authority's capital projects. I further move that the estimated general fund revenues be increased by $70,210 for payments from Norman Forward Fund to offset the cost of the additional Norman Municipal Authority support in fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Second.
From the council? Councilmember Allison.
Question on this one. So with the offset, there's no impact to the budget, correct? It's the money's coming from Norman Forward, general fund. Now, in the future, in 10 years, or say there was not a Norman Forward II, and we did not have those funds to allocate, then that position becomes part of the standard municipal budget? Because we can't really eliminate the position at that time, since it's not a contract position?
That's correct, sir. Although, it would be assumed that, to the extent the Norman Municipal Authority had other projects ongoing, might be public safety sales tax, might be Norman Forward II, whatever it may be, to the extent that Norman Municipal Authority has additional staffing needs, it could be continued to fund that way.
And at the time, right, as of right now, you were doing a full allocation from Norman Forward into the general fund to cover it? If they were to support a project that was not a part of Norman Forward, would we look at cost allocation, or?
Yes, sir. In effect, that's what this is.
Okay. But as of right now, we're looking at, the person may be 100% be working on Norman Forward projects.
It just so happens, and in this year's proposed budget, all of the Norman Municipal Authority projects are Norman Forward.
Are Norman Forward, okay, so there's not, okay. Perfect, thank you.
So we can change that each year, if we want.
Yes, ma'am, and that's how it would be envisioned.
However, we decide it needs to go in the budget. Okay. Good question. Councilmember Castleberry.
I was just going to clarify what Councilman Allison asked, but I think we've seen some reports on this, and we've looked at it. And this position alone, last year, on just the Griffin Park, would have saved $280,000. So, and that was just one of the smaller Norman Forward projects. So I think this position will definitely pay for itself. And I'm not opposed to, if this is contracted out, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be an employee, you know. However you want to do it, I think this position is important. It'll save us some money, which will save Norman Forward some money, which allows us to maybe do some more Norman Forward projects, or free up some money for some different projects. So I fully support this one.
They haven't started yet, okay. The motion on the floor is to amend the budget as previously stated. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the budget, approve the amendment passes unanimously.
Councilmember Castleberry gets all the credit for that one, because he's been pushing for that for over a year.
Credit or blame, if you want to look at it. Credit, blame, if you look at it, right?
At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Hickman to make the Seventh Amendment.
I move that the general fund allocations to the city manager department be increased by $37,746 for a half-year, and capital fund allocations for capital outlay transfers to the general fund be increased by $2,250 for expansion of the city's sustainability programs.
Second. Any comments from the council?
I just want to say I'm very excited that we're going to approve this position. I wish it was for a full year, but I'm happy we're at least doing it for a half-year. We've been doing some wonderful environmental initiatives in the community already. As many of you all know, we passed RF 100. We passed the updated mayor's climate agreements through the ECAB, our Citizen Advisory Board. We're in the process of discussing a tree ordinance. We've already passed the HERS Energy Efficiency Home Initiative. We've started discussions about a water conservation initiative. And so we have a lot of sustainability-related programs, as I would call them, that we've either already approved or in the pipeline. And so I think there's going to be plenty of work for this person to do, and an opportunity for us to have on staff. I kind of put it, I sometimes refer to it as a person who's kind of the, if Terry is our development coordinator, the sustainability person is kind of the yin and the yang, if you will, that works with Terry, and somebody who is, in a sense, almost an ombudsman for the community, the residents, to help with these sustainability initiatives. So I'm very excited about it. One question I would have, from what was previously discussed, is to the extent that this person is doing work potentially down the road on things like the water conservation program, if we get something like that passed, or if we pass a stormwater utility, could this person be funded in part through one of those other utility funds, depending upon how their work ends up being divided?
Theoretically, yes, it could. Again, that would be up to the discretion of this body in your stead as trustees of the utility authority, or a future stormwater utility authority. But just remember that that would have to be in the interest of the ratepayers of those utilities.
Yeah, no, I understand. So like, if in theory, we've started the discussion, as Terry knows, about a water conservation program with our development community, let's say we passed that program, and this person was going to be, help facilitate that program, and we said it was 25% of their time commitment, in theory, they could be, 25% of their salary could be paid out of the water utility.
In theory, yes, it could.
Okay. Thank you.
Further council comments? Are there any comments from the public on this amendment? Motion on the floor, final council comments. Motion on the floor is to amend the budget, as previously stated. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes. The motion passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Councilmember Allison.
That concludes all of the amendments. Are there final comments from the council regarding the budget? The motion on the floor is to adopt the FY, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Castleberry.
I just wanted to give council, I've got kind of a little running tab here. This will change line 63, the net difference of our expenditures over our revenues, to So basically, we're spending 2.168 million more than we're taking in. It's very concerning.
Councilmember Cardola.
So this is going to be very difficult for me, because I have actively supported these new positions and these hires. I have spoken, in fact, just this week, with our disabled community about the need for an ADA technician. I've actively worked on the Community Planning and Transportation Committee to bring about these new ordinances. After thinking about this, though, the fact that we are going to be spending $2 million more than we are bringing in, and looking at the budget very closely since April, I'm realizing I can't vote for this. And I'm not happy about it at all. And I'm increasingly wondering how it's come to this, because last year, we did have a balanced budget, not by a lot, just by a very, very small amount. So I would love to see these new positions. I do believe that the City of Norman is understaffed. I believe that all of these positions are, in fact, absolutely necessary. So I'm not happy about sharing this, or having to cast this vote tonight. I'm not happy about the fact that the $4 million in found TIF money was put into the general fund, and we're still spending $2 million more than we are going to be bringing in for next year. This year, I did not have the pleasure of serving on the Finance Committee. They met in the mornings, and I teach in the mornings, and so I was not capable of being at those meetings. And so last year, I felt very much more on top of what was going on with the city financially. And this year, I have felt very much not on top of what's going on. So I apologize, and I apologize to my ward. But that being said, I cannot, trying to be pragmatic about how this city runs, I cannot, in good conscience, vote for a budget that we are spending this much more than we are bringing in. I personally have not developed a long-term economic strategy for the city, nor has this council. It's very hard to develop one of those with the limited amount of time. And I don't think I'm saying anything that we wouldn't collectively agree with. There's just not enough hours in the day, and we will have to continue to work on that. So I apologize that I can't support this. I really would like these new positions, and there are a lot of services that I would love to provide, but it does not look good in the near-to-immediate future. So there are things that we're going to have to start saying no to. Thank you.
Councilmember Beerman.
So I share a number of Councilmember Cardola's concerns. Last year's budget was approved with about a $35,000 positive balance. Yet, speaking of found TIF money, we still had to use 1.5 million of that to cover expenditures over and beyond what we expected to spend and budgeted for. Additionally, I am also extremely displeased that we are sitting here tonight, this afternoon, I guess, feeling like we have to pass a budget because we've waited so long. I feel like this was a scheduling problem as well. We don't have a long-term strategic budgeting plan. We know some of what the mega-trends are, but we don't have a solution on how to address them. So I do support, I supported all of these positions, but I'm not so sure that I can support this budget. If we're going to, if we're already projecting to spend $2 million more than we're taking in, and last year, despite a $35,000 positive balance, we still ended up spending 1.5 million more than that, where are we going to be this time next year? Previous councils kicked the can down the road, and I'm not so sure that I want to be a part of kicking it down the road any further.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Well, I wasn't going to say anything, because I think everybody, it's very clear when I ran for council, I said I would never vote for a budget that spent more money brought in. I've backed it up twice in the past six years, voted for that. This budget spends more than it brings in, so I'm not voting for it. Now, I would ask the question, what do you want to cut? Because I have to ask myself that question, too. And I'd ask, I guess I would ask Mr. Francisco or Mr. Bryant, if this budget doesn't pass tonight procedurally, I mean, I know, what happens? I know by state law, we're required to turn in a balance, not a balance budget, we're required to turn a budget in to the State Auditor's Office, or Treasurer's Office, by June 30th, and I know you need 10 days to prepare it, that type of thing. So I'm just curious. I think council needs to know the ramifications of not passing a budget tonight. Whoever's?
The council, in its capacity as the fiduciaries of the city, are required by the city charter and by state statute to pass a legally balanced budget. By legally balanced budget, that means that in each of the adopted funds of the city, there is at least a positive fund balance. The proposed budget has a positive fund balance. If council does not pass a budget within seven business days of the start of the new fiscal year, it has breached that fiduciary responsibility, and it would place the city in a position of not having appropriated funds to operate the functions of the city. Now, passing a budget does not mean that you have to pass the proposed city manager's budget, but you do have to pass a budget and appropriate funds to operate the city.
And we have to have that to you this evening?
You have to have that to us in a timely fashion in order to print and deliver the adopted budget, whatever it may be, from the governing body, in time to meet those statutory and city charter requirements of seven business days before the start of the fiscal year.
And I understood on Tuesday evening that we had to have this meeting very quickly, or we would not be able to get the budget to you so that it could be corrected and printed and sent.
Yes, ma'am. That's, just understand that whenever you make any change to the budget that has been previously printed, in this case, the proposed city manager's budget, any of those financial changes require all of the tables to be reformatted, all of the numbers to be changed, because everything has to balance. Once that balancing is done, and all of the verbiage is changed to reflect what council has adopted, yes, it takes several days to make those changes, and then print that four, 600-page document in order to deliver it timely to the county and to the state.
So my understanding is, if now, if we don't pass the city manager's budget, which we've been talking about month after month after month, we've asked the city manager to send us ideas for what we could cut, nobody agreed to any of those. And so if we don't pass this, then we have to stay here this evening until we come up with?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, again, it could be tomorrow, but I would at least like to have the weekend to work on whatever the council has adopted.
Okay. Since these things were not, I mean, this is the first time I'm hearing some of these things. Everybody's been concerned about the budget. There's a reason that we have reserves. That's exactly why you have reserves, so that you have enough money to pay for the budget. This is a balanced budget. We have to have a balanced budget by law. We also have already discussed in Finance Committee that we'll be doing a strategic long-term budgeting plan, which we've needed to do a long time. We've already discussed it. We plan to do that. I believe it's in the budget to do the plan, or to do the?
No, there's no money for it. I mean, it's been discussed, and we've discussed it one Finance Committee meeting, and then again, it's on the next Finance Committee agenda next week, but it's underway at the staff level.
All right. Councilmember Holman.
Just, I mean, I agree with a lot of what's being said and the concerns that everybody has, but also, like the mayor said, we've been meeting about the budget for months, and we've all known what this budget is looking like. We've been presented with suggestions for cuts that none of us like, and none of us agreed on, as was mentioned. The vast majority of the overrun isn't money that we're proposing to spend on anything, actually. It's money that we're allocating in case something happens, like an emergency or a storm event, or something like that. So we're not necessarily voting to spend more money than we're bringing in. We put in reserves, X amount, a threshold, every year, that can make it look like our budget is unbalanced, but most years, we don't end up spending any of that money. Maybe we will this year, and there might be a really bad storm that comes up, and we'll need it. Hopefully not. But, you know, again, I think we've had a long time to figure out if we want to cut something, or come up with our own budget that's different than the manager's, and we haven't done that on this council, and maybe that's our fault. So I think we have, we have to pass a budget, that's clear. And, you know, putting the staff in the position of having to wait on us to figure out what we're going to do, even though we didn't do it for the last several months, I don't think is something we should do. So I'm going to support this budget, and maybe the next council can do something about the budget next year and figure out what we want to cut out of it. In five years I've been on council, we've never cut anything. But we always, and every year at this meeting, I ask people, people always have concerns about the budget and what the city spends money on, but nobody ever comes up here and gives us suggestions for what services they want to see cut. All I ever hear from my residents and residents across this city is that we want more services, and we want better services. Well, that costs money. And so I'm going to support this budget, and maybe next, maybe in year six, we can figure something else out. Thank you.
Councilmember Allison.
Okay, I have a question on, for Mr. Francisco. We were talking about the found TIF money, in quotation marks. And you said what makes this budget legal is that we have an ending fund balance that's positive, and that ending fund balance is like right about three, is projected to be 3.162 or so? So if we would not, how much is, what was the amount of the TIF, found TIF money?
Approximately $4.2 million that went to the general fund.
That went in the general fund. So what concerns me is that we're, you know, we basically use that to balance our budget, and I know when we sat in the room and we decided what we were going to do with that money, that we were going to put it in general fund, and then we were going to decide what we want to spend it on. And now we are basically obligating ourselves to put it in reserve. I mean, we have, we can't spend it. We have to put it in reserve, or otherwise our budget wouldn't be balanced, right?
That's one way of looking at it. I mean, council transferred the funds to the general fund and to the capital fund in a council action in February. Now it's available for appropriation, and yes, with all the other things that are in fund balance.
And I agree, it should have gone to general fund. I don't, you know, I was one of the people who said we shouldn't spend it right away, which I'm glad we didn't now. But so, but really, and we're kind of appropriating it to our required reserve, because we can't appropriate it to anything else. I mean, there's not the option. I can't make a motion to appropriate some of it to the senior center, or some of it to, you know, a dog park or something. I mean, we have, right now, there's really, we could not do anything with that $4 million, or we wouldn't have a balanced budget, right?
By the definition of current year revenues equalling or exceeding current year expenditures, no, sir, you couldn't.
Okay. That was my question. Thanks.
Councilmember Wilson.
I agree with Councilmember Holman on this, that we're agreeing as a council to put less in our savings account. Am I understanding that correctly? If we appropriate in this capacity? And then I would ask, is it, would it be appropriate for us to have a, like a mid-year review, like a quarter-year review?
You're mandated by ordinance to have a mid-year review.
But I mean, like, that's mid-year, like half-year, right?
Yes.
Six months. So could we do an earlier, like a three-month review, three months, 90 days from now?
Absolutely.
Kind of come back and visit our expenditures at that point? Is that?
Yes. And again, council receives monthly reports on revenues and expenditures, and how we're doing. And I think the actions that you've taken to date reflect the outcome of those reports.
And then we've talked about having more of a running tally when we're appropriating at the council meetings, change orders and that sort of thing, how that at the council meetings, change orders and that sort of thing, how that is affecting our budget.
Again, as part of those monthly reports, council receives a report on everything that's been appropriated.
We get that every month, every change.
I'm talking about a run, okay. Okay. Maybe I need a bigger hammer, like telling me you're getting closer to this, but I'll work on that part of it. That's all I had.
Councilmember Hickman.
So the savings account issue, I guess, that Councilmember Allison and Wilson were just talking about, is that the 2% reserve?
No, sir. The 2% emergency fund is an allocation within the general fund, just like salaries and office supplies and everything else.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's budgeted.
The fund balance is outside of revenues and expenditures, the savings account, if you will.
Okay. And then we have the revenue stabilization fund, which is basically our rainy day fund, right?
Yes, sir. And that's a separate fund outside of the general fund.
So if the 2% reserve is an allocation that we make as a part of the budgeting process?
Yes, sir.
Could we elect not to allocate those funds this year and to put them into revenue instead?
No, sir, not without changing your adopted net revenue stabilization fund balance ordinance. And that's in the city code, that you will budget that each year.
So there's not any way to do something to allocate those dollars someplace else?
Once the allocation has been made, you could, you could use the money to transfer it to the rainy day fund or, you know, again, there are restrictions on what you can appropriate rainy day fund balance for, but there really aren't that same sort of restrictions on what you can use the 2% emergency allocation for.
Well, I guess if you're telling me that there's an ordinance that without, I assume, without changing the ordinance, we have to allocate 2%, which is $1.4 million to this reserve fund for, if there's a disaster, but I see that in our net revenue stabilization fund, our rainy day fund, which we have over $3 million budgeted in right now, that it also allows for us to spend that money for a natural or man-made disaster, which I assume therefore kind of they cover each other. And we've already spent the 2% emergency reserve that we could pass a budget and then reallocate the 2% reserve to reduce the over expenditure or the, going to put those funds into, I'll say, a revenue account.
Yes, sir. Remember that one of, one of the reasons or one of the purposes that the net revenue stabilization fund can be used is if the general fund's operating reserve falls below 1% of general fund expenditures. You'll recall that when council directed us to do a what-if scenario, if you will, of what if there were no found TIF money, one of the things that we recommend that you might consider was appropriating rainy day fund balance. So, so yes, the 2% reserve allocation in the general fund has to be spent. Operating reserves have to have been drawn down below 1% of general fund expenditures, but then you could appropriate rainy day fund balance to buttress, if you will, the general fund reserves.
So are we at a point where the general fund operating reserve fund balance is projected to fall below 1% of budget expenditures?
No, you're not.
Not until next year? Is that what I heard?
If all projections are correct, yes, you'd fall below that by the end of next fiscal year.
Okay, on the, on the revenue side, did we, what kind of growth rate do we project on revenue from 18, from, in this current budget, the proposed budget?
Sales tax?
Yes, sir.
2%.
And what did we project last year?
2.5%.
Okay, what if we had, what if we made the same projection on revenue as we did last year, how much more revenue would that be? Do you have a bump?
In the general, no, I wouldn't want to go back and look at that, but it would be in the hundreds of thousands.
I think it's 40%. 35, 375.
In the general fund, I think that's probably about right, 600,000.
Based on the most recent information about the status of the economy at the state level and to some extent here in the city of Norman, do you, do you think that 2.5% is reasonable?
Interesting question, councilmember, because I was having this discussion with the city manager. Because of the trend, if you will, of the last two months, but understand that those last two months only brought us to zero for the fiscal year. And what I said to the city manager was that that was making more, me more confident that my 2% projection could be realized, but 2.5, 3, 4, I don't know. There's still way too much variance in our, in our sales tax returns for me to be comfortable with that. Maybe 2.5, but 3, 4, I would not be comfortable with that. And remember that those projections would hold for all of the sales tax-based funds, public safety sales tax, normal forward, capital fund, so forth.
Okay, one more question. From the estimated FY '18 salaries and benefits line, it's 55.19 million and for FY '19, it's 56.29 million. Is that based on just anticipated pay raises and step raises or is that, I know we just talked about some new positions, but what, tell me what that 1.2 million is based on?
It's based on a formula of 5% increase to the salary and benefit category of expenditure, but remember that that category includes a lot of different things that would inflate more or less than that amount. So yes, merit increases are built in there at 4% for those employees who would be due for merit increase during the course of the fiscal year. Health insurance cost increases are built in there. Related pension and retirement contribution and social security contributions are built in there tied to the salaries themselves. So all of those things taken together, it's just a formula-based 5% assumption of growth in that category.
Okay, and this may or may not be a question for you. I'll look at the city attorney. What, I'll ask it of you since you're standing up there, Anthony. What flexibility does the city council have, I'll say, to do a freeze on, on pay raises, including union employees?
You would only have the ability to direct the city manager in negotiations with the unions, with the bargaining units, to, to not do merit increases or cost of living adjustments. What those negotiations come out to be is a separate animal from what you would budget or you might, what you might direct the manager to do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Bierman.
Anthony, what would this exact budget look like without those found TIF funds? What would we be facing?
Before the amendments that you made, that was what was discussed in the what-if scenario that was forwarded to council about two months ago. But, but you would have had to identify about $1.5 million in order to have a legally balanced budget. And we gave you some suggested areas of cuts and appropriation of rainy day fund balance to get to that.
So that would be things like cutting cart service, cutting our payments to social service organizations.
Those are some of the things that were discussed, yes.
It's a pretty good thing we found that life raft.
It could also certainly mean staff positions.
Yes, ma'am.
So that was one of the reasons and is the reason year after year, the council has not been willing to do that because right now, it's worked out each year that we've had some kind of reserve or something's gone up and we will know by the middle of the year whether or not we're going to have to make some major adjustments. But I do not think it's a wise idea to start cutting services and if you cut people, you cut services or cut transportation or cut social services until you absolutely have to do it. That's what our job is, is to provide services for our community and we have the money to provide those services. We are not at Armageddon. And we have things that we can do that we have been talking about. We're working on the Stormwater Utility. There are decisions that can be made about the TIF. So I would strongly recommend that the council vote for this budget. We have had multiple opportunities to discuss this budget. We have been given the opportunity to say what we would cut. We have not done that. So at the 11th hour, I do not think it's a good idea for us to go in that room and huddle and decide a bunch of things that we're going to cut out of this budget. That just doesn't make one bit of sense to me.
Thank you. What would it take to end TIF II?
In order to end the apportionment of property tax and sales tax through the University of Norpark TIF fund, we would first have to pay off the indebtedness that we have through the TIF authority. It's about $11 million that remains, but we have money in the bank to pay that off.
So there's money sitting there, ready to pay that off if we, if we were to end?
Yes, ma'am. You'll recall that that was discussed with the council about a year ago. It was decided both by the council and by the TIF Oversight Committee that we would wait until the actual call date on those outstanding notes, which is September 1st of this year, to make that consideration. Once those notes have been paid off, then council can make the decision to either continue the apportionment up until the time that the $54 million of projects that were authorized in 2006 funds were available to pay those or could reduce the projects that were authorized through going back through the statutory review process and reducing the amount of authorized projects.
So we would have to go back to the statutory review process to get that done or council makes that?
No, ma'am. That would be considered a major change, so it would have to go back through the statutory review process.
But then ultimately, that's a recommendation and council would make the change?
Yes.
And then that would, if we did that, that would infuse the general fund by, and I know the answer is I'm just trying to get them into the public record, that how much?
About $4 million of sales tax to the general fund per year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Ending TIF II is not something we can do tonight, correct?
No, sir.
So it really has no effect on this budget?
No, sir.
It is something we need to look at next year.
Certainly you could, yes.
Now, if you take the 1.4 million out, well, actually, we have $965,000 of savings budgeted in here, correct?
Assumed savings.
Assumed savings. So without that, we'd really be at $3 million of loss. We'd be spending, if we did not incur those savings.
Yes, sir.
Instead of being at $2 million, we'd be at $3 million.
Yes, sir.
And the TIF would bring in $3 million, $4 million.
If there were no sales tax apportionment?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'd have $1 million roughly.
Yes, sir.
Now, I think everybody has said, let's do that, but let's make the school system whole, right? I mean, that's always been the argument, and that's $800,000 roughly and growing. Is it, the school, Norman Public Schools gets about $800,000 a year of direct additional funding because of, because of the TIF. You end the TIF, they don't get that.
Well, then they would get their apportioned property tax, however.
But then they get reduced by the state. We've, we've already talked about this. I mean, they're getting $800,000 now outside of the formula that they would lose if there was no TIF.
But they're contributing about $800,000 per year to the TIF that they no longer be contributing.
No, they're, they're contributing a million. There's about $2 million property tax. Yeah, but that's not going to matter to, I'm talking about what they would lose. They would get that $1 million in their formula, but then the state would cut them by $1 million.
Yes, they, they'd get.
They're going to lose $800,000. We were, I mean, I think this is just, we're talking semantics here. So anyway, that's only puts the $200,000, we, it balances the budget for a year, but then you got to fight, so, but it's something we have to look at. I'm all for that, but it's not something that we can do tonight. It's not an option we have on the table tonight. And I would note that the, the sales tax has been at that 2%, but overall revenue is up 4%. I think you have to look at our overall revenue. Overall revenue through May, the last numbers we got from finance, are up $2 million and we're $7 million below our expenditures. So we've done quite a bit of, I think the manager's done a great job of austerity, cutting some of these programs down here. And, and those are things I think we're going to continue to do. Also, the thing I just wanted to point out is I didn't really get my question answered of what happens if we don't pass the budget? I mean, I, I guess the answer to the question was you have to pass a budget.
You have to pass a budget.
Okay, but it, it doesn't pass.
If no budget is passed theoretically.
Would we have to have a special meeting? Do we come back? Do I mean, do we go to jail? I mean.
I might be able to help a little bit.
Thank you. Depends who votes for it.
I might be able to help a little bit on that question.
Appreciate it.
Technically, the only body that has the ability to appropriate money is the council. The manager can't appropriate it, certainly the city attorney can't, neither can the finance director. So we can't spend any money until it's appropriated. So if you don't pass a budget before July 1st, we shut down. Now, visiting with our auditor today, what are some less severe ramifications if we don't pass it timely? And that's really what Mr. Francisco's been talking about. It does end up becoming a procedural black mark, if you will, in our audit process and it could negatively impact our ability to get state and federal grants. Something that's never happened here in Norman. I did call Oklahoma City and some other cities to see if they had ever come across this and they said absolutely not. And, and one of the issues there is you can always amend the budget. So passing a budget timely so that we file the proper filings that are required under state statute, and so there's actually money appropriated to fund a necessary police, fire and other city services, has never been an issue in any other city in the state of Oklahoma, as I understand it. We could be a first. I would, I would.
We do that often.
Urge you not to do that. Find a compromise, adopt a budget, let's file it timely, and if you want to amend it later, I would suggest you do that later. There are some negative ramifications for our city. The most severe, again, would be if there are no funds appropriated for city services by July 1st, then the city needs to shut down. It's illegal for any city employee to spend funds that have not been properly appropriated.
So to follow up on that, I guess, you're saying that if, if we pass this budget with consternation and don't like it and that kind of stuff, which I, I fully understand, I'm with you. We could come back when we have more time in, in July or August. I mean, I think this is something we'd probably want to address immediately and look at how we could quote amend the budget or mid-year, we do mid-year review also, but we could make that more timely to amend that, revise the budget next month if we really were urgent about it.
That's something.
That's a possibility.
The direction that we got.
We can revise the budget any single meeting we want to.
Yes, yes, sir.
And we do, whenever we vote to.
The appropriation process or reduced appropriation process, you can do that at any meeting.
I mean, we do that pretty much almost every meeting. We, if we ever spend something out of fund balance, we've revised the budget.
Yes, sir.
So it's not, it's not an uncommon thing we do, it's just something I think we do but don't necessarily realize it as much. So, all right, guys, that's, there's your cards.
Councilmember Cardula. I didn't request to speak. Councilmember Wilson?
No. Yeah. I'm trying to think what my question was. I, I guess. I, I guess I want to kind of grab hold of what Councilmember Castleberry said and, and what I said originally, which was a mid, mid-year, maybe, we'll call that a quarter, quarter year, or 30-day even adjustment meeting. If we were to, can we, can we like set that on the agenda right now, tonight, so that we're held accountable to that 30-day or the next meeting, or?
Yes, ma'am. And again, I would suspect
Procedurally...
Procedurally, I would think that that would be through the Finance Committee. But again, all council members are invited to every Finance Committee meeting. All of the announcements the Finance Committee gets are made to the full council.
It could certainly be, be made to the Finance Committee that could make a recommendation to the rest of the council, and anybody comes, can come to those meetings.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it, I guess. Thank you.
Councilmember Hickman.
I just wanted to clarify, Anthony, in light of what you have advised us and our city attorney, if in theory our total projected revenue for FY '19 is 75.5 and some change, and our net expenditures is 77.5 and some change, plus the positions we added, if we were to, just to make one simple amendment to the budget that said the total revenue shall equal net expenditures, that would in theory be what some of us consider a balanced budget, i.e. not dipping into the fund balances, and we could either, A, at a later date, go back and amend this budget and add in either more revenue or more expenditures, or on a case-by-case basis, as the city manager wanted authority to spend more dollars than we had budgeted, we could do that on a case-by-case basis. We want to dip into the fund balance to spend these dollars. We want to
The only caution that I would have for you about that is that that is why the budget has to be submitted to the county excise board and to the state auditor, because there has to be a reasonable expectation that the projected revenues that the budget is based on can be in fact expect to, expected to occur. If you just suddenly added $2.5 million of revenue...
No, no. I'm reducing expenses by the $2 million that are balanced.
Yes, sir, you could certainly do that.
Not directing the city manager to make any cuts,
What to do.
layoffs, cut services at this time, knowing that it's a year-long budget, knowing we have money in our, quote, fund balance, but that if, as need did, funds that need to be allocated from the fund balance, if we, if revenues do not go up, we could do that, right?
Yes, your action would just
Essentially, it's creating a system.
Just, just as you've done a series of amendments that added things to the budget, you could do an amendment that says, I move to reduce allocations to the general fund, and that's really all you would have to say. Reduce allocations to the general fund by $2.5 million, or whatever it may be. You don't have to, no.
Yeah, I mean, so my, my simple question is, we could make a simple amendment that said net expenditures shall equal total revenue?
I would suggest that you should be more specific as to revenue versus expenditure, reducing or increasing appropriations by projected revenues of, or projected expenditures of.
Let me clarify. I'm saying if the total revenue in the budget, if we said, if we left that line alone, and I'm just saying to you that that number is $75.5 million approximately. If so, if the amendment was, I move to amend net expenditures to be $75,535,398, which is the exact number of, of total revenue, and that amendment passed, that means we would then, at the end, be showing that the net difference is zero on the net difference line, which is line 63 on the general fund in the budget currently.
The only thing I would say about that is because because what you're voting on is in amendments to the council, to the city manager's proposed budget, you should really make that amendment in the form of a reduction to expenditures from the proposed budget, instead of saying net. Just, you know, this amount of reduced expenditures.
Oh, okay. $2,112,638. Okay, what was that number?
The number to balance is $2,170,000.
Change?
Let me just remind everybody, we have control over the allocation of the money in the budget. It, that is our responsibility. We can pass this budget, we can change things. We've been able to change things every month.
Well, I just think the question is whether or not, I mean, in theory, if we approve a budget to spend $79 million, the city manager can spend $79 million.
Yes, sir.
Right? If we appropriate, if we appropriate.
If all that you appropriated was $76.5 million, then all the manager is allowed to do is $76.5 million. So yes, what I would suggest, if you wanted to do that, is that you would move to amend the general fund budget by reducing allocations by 2 point, and I'll take Councilmember, Castleberry's word for the amount, 2.147 million dollars. And that would be the end of the amendment. Now, the ramifications of that amendment is that now the city manager and staff are going to have to find ways to make that reduced allocation work, either by cutting services, cutting people, or something. We would have to find $2 million and cut it.
And the city manager could come to council and say, I need X dollars, and we would know at that point in time we're allocating it out of the fund balance.
Council would have to appropriate then additional funds.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Because you've reduced appropriations by that amount.
Okay, thank you, Anthony.
Councilmember Allison.
I had a question for the city manager. In the projected FY '19 budget, it says we have supplies, materials, services, maintenance, savings of $956,000. But in the past, we've only realized about $300,000 in savings. Is that just money that we thinks departments are not going to spend? I'm looking at line 59, sorry. Why didn't we just cut that from their budget to begin with, instead of having that savings? Is like a hedge? I mean, hedging on the fact they're not going to spend all their budget?
It's, it's a portion of that. Sometimes it's hopeful that commodity prices will be lower than what we've budgeted. And then in some cases, it's just a purposeful, not ordering as many supplies, for example, asphalt material. We will, we've had a very robust capital construction projects. We have good budgets in that area, so we'll cut back on asphalt supply. So it's truly a combination of all those things that we try to do in consultation with departments.
So what's the strategy behind putting it there instead of just cutting? If we looked at last year and those departments that save money in those lines, just, they didn't spend it last year, so let's cut it. I mean, is there a strategy of putting it kind of in that, in that line item? Because you don't know which departments are going to save, not spend, or? Because if you've, I mean, we are, we were hedging on that $956,000 in savings, but really, the budgets, the departments have, they've been allowed to spend that $956,000. We're just hoping they don't. Okay. But, I mean, I know, I just kind of, I just noticed that line item, and that's my fault, but I think, I mean, in the future, we just cut, cut it. If we don't think they're going to spend it, we cut it, don't kind of hedge, hedge on it. I know on the staffing and personnel part is hard, the savings in there, we have the $800,000 savings, that's hard to know by department, because you don't know which departments are going to have people retire and such. But that's, it's a large increase in our hedge, from $300,000 to $956,000 in one year.
Councilmember Castleberry. I didn't know if you were going to say something else.
I'm sorry.
Anthony, let me ask you. Right now, we've got $956,578 in materials, supplies, services, maintenance, savings.
Yes, sir.
If we wanted to balance this revenue expenditures, I think the appropriate amendment would be to increase that line item by $2,168,800. One million, one, we'll have $120,000 left over here. $2,170,000.
Well, remember, that is
Let me ask you, that 967
That action would not reduce appropriations.
I don't want to prove, well, are you not only, but you're only, okay, so it would have to be above that.
It would have to be above that line, yes. It would have to be, again, if, if, if what you want to do is, is make the $2,000,000, now $146,000 zero, I would suggest that the amendment might be just to reduce appropriations by that amount, and then leave it to the city manager and staff to, to figure out how to make that work.
So I, I think it, it sounds like that we don't have support for the budget, so I'm trying to figure something out here. So I think there's, there's two things that depend upon how everybody looks at it. If you wanted to zero this out, then I think you reduce supplies and services by $2,168,000. That gets you there. If you want to just reduce it in order to get to the 2% reserve, so basically, our net difference would be the million four seventy-three. They're saying, yes, we're appropriating that money, but we're not, but we're only going to spend that money if something happens. So it's really discretionary funds. So if you wanted to have a budget of 1.4 million of appropriations over revenue, not necessarily expenditures, but appropriations over revenues, then you could make that about $700,000. You'd reduce it by 1.4.
That's roughly correct, yes.
I mean, I'm just trying to lay out the options for council, so.
Councilmember Wilson.
What does that do to the functionality of the city, his suggestion? Does it change anything, day-to-day operations?
Yes, I mean, it would be difficult to, to cut $700,000 without impacting some service or day-to-day operation. But, but again, that, that would be the direction from council.
Would we be effectively asked, would we be effectively saying, we're cutting things, and then we're going to, every council meeting, be asked to re, to, to change order things, ratcheting it back up?
I, I don't think so. I mean, again, we would, we would be well into the fiscal year before, if that reduced appropriation were realized, we'd be well into the fiscal year before. We'd be bumping up against, man, you know, we don't have any appropriated money. So it might be next April or May, before we may come back. But, but again, that would be the direction from council. And I personally would take that as a direction from council, not to spend the money. I mean, not to come back to you. You've, you've told us what money you've appropriated, now we got to make it work.
But does that, is that like a broad-stroke cut of services, though? I, I mean, I feel like that's...
In the same what-if scenario that was presented to council a few months ago, principles for cutback management were discussed. In those principles, it was discussed that across-the-board cutting is, is not wise. Because again, that ignores the priority of services. The, the idea is to find those services that are of the lowest priority, and that is where you concentrate your cuts, or you get totally out of those businesses.
Okay.
Councilmember Hickman.
I guess, so here's my question. If we reduce the authorized expenditures by $2 million, at what point in time, but let's say we continue to run the city as currently planned in this budget, and as amended, at what point in time would we get to the point where we are running out of money? Because we cut the $2 million. Would that be December? Would that be March? I'm trying to get an idea of the time that we would have if we said, we're going to, we're going to skinny down the budget so that we're not pre-authorizing money to be spent, but we want to work to get where we either identify actual things that we want to specifically cut to have time to work with staff on, B, see how sales tax revenues come in and see if that makes reasonable sense to amend the budget to increase revenues, or C, go ahead and reallocate or allocate or appropriate additional dollars just from the reserve account or the, the fund balance account, realizing that we don't want to actually cut services, and we can't find things that we want to cut. So are we, are we giving ourselves three months, six months, nine months?
$2 million is roughly 6% of a total general fund expenditure of $76 million. So you'd be 5% or thereabouts before the end of the year. So you'd be May, mid-May,
Okay.
maybe first of June, before you'd run out of money.
Two weeks. It'd be, yeah, end of May and first of June.
I would just, you know, I would just add to that comment. That's the arithmetic, but to really implement those things, depending on what those things are, would require lead time.
Absolutely. Because again, you wouldn't want to wait until you get to first of June and, and all of a sudden cut $700,000. You would want to, you know, it's much easier to, to manage over the course of the full fiscal year. And that's certainly what we've experienced with the, with the 2% cuts that the manager has, has implemented. Some years he did that very late in the year, and it was much more difficult to manage. Very similarly, that's what, that's where that turnover savings came from for the office, for the supplies and materials category, is kind of the total of those cuts. And we just kind of put that assumption into the budget.
I, I think the city manager has a comment.
Well, I'm just continuing that thought is, and for example, if those were to be personnel changes, you know, our, most of our workforce is unionized, and so there's a very comprehensive process in order to go through that, you know, through a reduction in force, if that's what it was to come to. And so you can't wait till May to make that happen and to achieve those savings.
Councilmember Cardula.
So this would be a question in regards to what you were just talking about, city manager. How much of our city staff is non-unionized? And who?
In the general fund, it's about 80% unionized.
Okay. So is, how much would it save us to pursue like a, a salary cap even on the non-unionized staff?
When you say salary cap?
Meaning no raises?
Including merit increases.
Including merit increases.
For just non-union employees.
Right, because we have greater discretion with them, correct?
It'd be
I, I'm just asking.
$30,000, $40,000.
That's it?
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'm asking. I, well, and I, I'm sorry. I, I know that makes people feel shifty and uncomfortable, but I've worked for the state. I haven't, I don't get any raises, right? And haven't seen one for eight years. So these are things that we should talk about. And I know no one ever wants to bring it up, but it is worth talking about. And I thought, if it saved us money, then it's worth talking about. I apologize, guys, but if it's, if it's not going to be, you know, worthwhile, then, yeah. And, and so, and the second question was, so what happened to the, there were 2%, cuts made across the board last year in the budget? What?
Once the budget had been adopted.
Once the budget had been adopted? Okay.
And that was in, and that was in response to continue to see sales tax collections dive over the last 12 months.
Okay.
Or 18 months, really.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Quick question, because I, I mean, quick comment, because I know, I like to get to public comments. I know we only got 15 minutes left. I would note that we've only, we've got about $16 million of what I call discretionary funds. Take this, take the salaries out, and take the capital budget out and the internal. So basically, if you look at supplies and materials and services, there's about $16 million in there. And so I think those are the areas that we would look at if we were going to do potential cuts. So theoretically, Sean's going to kill me, theoretically, your budget for fuel is $500,000. It's February, you've used all your budget, you don't have any fuel. It's February, you've used all your budget, you don't have any fuel. I assume you'd come to council and say, guys, I need 50,000 dollars this month so I can actually run my trucks and do some bulldozers. I think we'd probably approve that. Or I've used my concrete budget, I've used my asphalt budget, and then we would have to make a special appropriation out of fund balance. I mean, is that, Anthony, is that typically how it would work? I mean, once you, or I guess you can, the manager can move money from another account.
It's usually the latter.
Yeah, they would move money from something else.
Using the fuel example, just remember that the vast majority of general fund fuel is police cars.
Sure.
And so again, you have to think about the service that you want to reduce.
I was just picking something that, and that could go down quite a bit by price and it, it could go up quite a bit by fuel cost, too. So I mean, you get, that's a variable we don't really necessarily know. But I'd kind of like to leave it at that and, and I, I'm done with my questions and I
I, I am just, we don't have to have public comments and I've, I've got a comment to make. I, I am just struggling with why it is that we have had meeting after meeting after meeting, we have had things put before us that are suggestions about things we could cut, we didn't want to cut them. And now we're talking about, at the end, when we need to go ahead and pass a budget, we're talking about making decisions up here about cutting 2 million dollars. This, this does not make any sense to me. We have had the opportunity to talk. This is the city manager's budget. We have control all year long, we can do all sorts of things. We need to pass a budget tonight. The motion on the floor is to adopt the FYE 2019 City of Norman operating and capital budgets as amended. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote. So what was it? So go ahead and approve it tonight. Anybody to vote for it. Because if it fails, it's from the prevailing side, so somebody that votes no has to reconsider. The motion fails by a vote of four to five. Voting in support, Councilmember Holman, Councilmember Clark, Councilmember Wilson, Mayor Miller.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider. Second.
I have a second.
And, and basically my motion to reconsider is, we have to pass a budget. We didn't pass one. So we've got to do an amendment, or we can continue to vote no and schedule a time later on, but basically my motion to reconsider is to not kill this right now and to see if we can work something out. So that's the purpose of it. As far as those comments go, for six years, I mean, my, I don't, there should be nobody surprised at my position. So I don't want to hear this that, at the last minute. I've been talking about this since I came on council, the very first year I came on council, I voted against the budget and Mayor Rosenthal told me, you can't be finance chair because you vote against the budget. And I said, well, fine, I'm voting against the budget. That's why I need to be finance chair this first year. So you've had five years of a non-CPA, be the finance chair because I voted against the budget. So I'm sorry, that's a principle, that's an conviction I have, so I don't know why you're surprised I voted against it. And I think everybody else has made their positions very clear and so, don't act shocked.
I've got a motion and a second to reconsider. Councilmember Wilson, do you have a question?
And Finance Chair, what were your suggestions for cuts?
We could do several things. If you want to get to where we only have a deficit of the 2% reserve, if that makes you more comfortable, so we'd be appropriating money that we hope we don't spend, but we have it for a disaster. This is one of the things I've talked about, that I think we need to change that ordinance so we only, we only appropriate 1% and we actually put 1% away into a reserve fund, but we can't do that tonight. I would suggest that we cut the city manager's department by 55,000, we cut human resources by 25,000. I've got a specific cut in the city, well, the city manager's budget, there's 55,000 dollars in here in services and maintenance in the special studies contributions division, which is money set aside for various issues which come up that are not anticipated in advance. In other words, we've got a 55,000 dollar slush fund in case we want to do any, any studies. So I would cut that specifically. And then if a study comes up, like, like I guess HVS was, come out of that budget, it would just be something that council would do a, a specific appropriation for. So I would cut that specifically. Then 25,000 dollars out of human resources, 50,000 dollars out of city manager's budget department, 250,000 dollars out of city council, 300,000 dollars out of public works, and 25,000 dollars out of planning. All of those would go in the supplies and materials and services and maintenance accounts. None of it would be paid, none of it would be salaries and benefits or internal services or capital equipment. That would get you to the 1.4 if that you wanted to get, if you wanted to get to a total zero deal, then I would suggest that we make an amendment to take 2,178,000 dollars out of supplies and materials and services out of just the general fund in general. Depends on how much you want to, how much you want to go to.
I mean, why did we not do those before tonight? I don't understand. Can we, since I still have the mic, can we do eight, the 800,000 dollar employee turnover thing, can that go back to 200,000 dollars that it's been previously? That would make it worse. That'd make it worse. Okay, never mind that. I didn't understand that one.
It can, yes, but doesn't.
Never mind. I was just curious. So we vote?
No.
There's been, there's been no amendment. I mean, I guess I'm, I've thrown out my suggestions, I guess I would ask the other people that have voted no what their solution is.
I'm going to vote on reconsider.
I'm sorry.
We're still on the motion to reconsider.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Anyone else have a comment on the motion to reconsider? Councilmember Hickman.
Well, I'd like to make a, a motion to amend.
We, we have the motion to re, we, we haven't talked about, we haven't approved reconsidering yet.
Okay.
We don't pass this, then we're dead. If we do pass it, then we can talk some more.
Then I support the motion to reconsider so we can keep talking about it.
All right, councilmembers, you may vote on the motion to reconsider. Are we gonna have to reconvene in there? Got two more people need to vote. The motion to reconsider.
I move that we, I move that we amend the city manager's proposed budget by reducing the total expenditure line 57 by 695,433 dollars. And the point here is that that gets you to be where the net difference is the 1.473422,000, which is the net, the 2% net reserve amount. And then leaves it up to the discretion of the city manager at, with the approval of council at a later date, has to what, how he implements that 695,000 dollar cut. So it buys us some limited period of time to further discuss this while approving a budget that is more balanced in a compromise in my heart and mind of a budget that still is authorizing expenditures of more money than we're bringing in, but that is based on the 2% reserve, hoping we don't have to spend that so, and not as deep of a, of a cut as a two, two-plus million dollar cut if we factored in the 2% reserve number as being expending more than we bring in. So trying to find a middle ground in between, getting all the way down to the full 2 million where it's a zero at the net difference line, but a zero at the net difference line if you factor in that what's left there is the two point, the 2% reserve amount. So it's a 695,000 dollar reduction in appropriated funds, knowing that that gives us time because that's a relatively small amount in the overall amount of the general fund, to work through the finance committee with staff to identify what, where those reductions would come and see how the revenue projections come in and whether or not that's something we do on a quarterly basis, a monthly basis, or at mid-year. I leave that up to the staff to make some recommendations, assuming we can pass this budget. Do I have a second?
Second. Got a motion and a second to amend the budget, the city manager's budget by 695, expenditures by 695,433 dollars. Council, yeah, Councilmember Castleberry.
I appreciate the, the spirit of the motion and it, if, if that's our goal, that's the way to get there. I'm, I'm still a zero-budget kind of guy. But I do, I, I appreciate the creativity of doing that. I think there is some merit to that in that, that leaves us at the 2% reserve in which case, and that's for emergency disasters. Basically by having that money pre-approved or pre-appropriated, when we have the windstorm and we need to go pick up the limbs, stuff like this, the manager can call him, he can do it, he can do it the next day. So it gives him the ability to react to emergencies very quickly. If we leave that, if we take that out of there, then it would, you know, he could still do that, but the, the cleanup companies would have to know that you're getting paid subject to council's approval. And so it may be, we may not get as good pricing, but it may be one of those things where council has to come back and he says, hey, I had to spend half a million dollars cleaning up the city because of the windstorm or the hailstorm or something like that, I need you guys to approve that. And I think at that point in time, that's when we would say, yeah, I'll prove that with fund balance because, so those are, I think that's the two ways of looking at it. So it, I think that might help out a little bit better for, for some people that were concerned with it. But I do appreciate the, the motion by Councilmember Hickman, I think that's.
Councilmember Wilson.
I've include your guys' requests for the new positions. Okay, so I just think that's tough, though, to be adding new positions, but you're basically asking the manager to look at other people to either reduce services or reduce jobs, but you're wanting new positions. It's gonna be tough to explain to employees in their departments. It can be saved just from services and, you know, supplies and stuff like that.
So let me have a clarification. If, if we do that, then it, the city manager has discretion over when and where and what to suggest to the council that we cut.
But, yeah, what is implied in Councilmember Hickman's motion, I think that was implied that we would come back to the council with a plan in order to accomplish that and the council would have an opportunity to review that. That's what I think was implied.
So if the council said, okay, we're three months, four months down, things are better, we're getting more money in, so we don't want you to do that yet.
Correct. That, that was the point of my motion, what I tried to say was, reduce the authorized expenditure appropriating of funds, I'm not sure which one I'm saying right, appropriating of funds or authorizing expenditures by the 600 and some odd thousand dollar amount without the manager taking action on it at this point in time, but giving staff and council an opportunity to work over the next months to identify either A, where those cuts would come from, B, see if revenues are going up and we don't actually have to make them, or C, we made, we've made some other types of decisions that have affected the budget that makes the cuts no longer necessary. And, and that would make, one of those things we may decide upon might be the TIF, as the mayor has said.
Or it could be a combination of all those.
Exactly, yes, sir.
It, it could be, just, just to make, make it clear, it could be, do, it, it could be a number of things done with the TIF. Yeah, there are several different things that could be done with the TIF, so. It could be the stormwater utility fee. Now, why am I going to, any, any other comments? Can we reconsider again? Okay, what, what we're, so we're voting again on the budget, we're voting with an amendment to take out 690, 695,433 dollars, have the city, yes, from the general fund that the city manager will be identifying for us.
Clarification.
Yes.
Just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, the stormwater utility as proposed in either form, any of the forms that we're getting from the citizen committee, does not relieve the general fund? Okay, just making sure, because there were comments that made it sound like that's our answer, but in its current form, it's not the answer. Okay, just making sure I was right. Okay.
It could, it could, yeah, it could, it could be.
Three options out there, I mean.
Supposed by the citizens committee. Yes, which is.
Didn't we just clarify?
Yeah, we did, I'm sorry.
We just clarified it. Any more questions? Councilmember, the motion with the amendments on the floor. You may cast your votes. Wait, there's still stuff on there. Oh, they already voted. Oh, they already voted? So we lost all our positions. I thought he said that includes the positions, considering those positions. I've got it, those were in the budget for him to consider.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to further amend the budget to reduce the expenditures in the general fund budget by $695,433 passes by a vote of seven to two, voting against Councilmember Castleberry, Councilmember Cardula.
Because of the fact that we have gone over the time that Planning Commission needs to start, I am going to dispense with miscellaneous comments. We have to go back to, where are we? I'm sorry, we have to go back in, we still have to do the Norman Convention and Visitors Bureau. No? Oh, I see. I see what we have to do. Motion on the floor is to adopt the City of Norman operating and capital budgets as amended. You may cast your votes. I thought that's what we just voted on. We voted on the amendment.
The motion to amend the budget, further amend the budget as a whole passes by a vote of seven to two, voting against Councilmember Castleberry, Councilmember Cardula.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I asked for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.